Well, with that in my work, I'll go ahead and get our regular city council meeting started. I'd ask Brittany to offer opening remarks. Paul will lead us in the pledge.
Our Father in Heaven, we come to thee at this time as we prepare to review matters for Elkridge City and we bless that that will be with us, that we can make the best decisions for the city and for the residents, that we can uphold our duties and that we will be able to have clear minds and make good decisions as we review the information here tonight. We're thankful for the many blessings that we enjoy here in the city, for peace and quietness and for the great views and the kindness of the neighbors that we have around us. Let me say these in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Need a motion for the approval of the agenda timeframe?
So moved.
One second. All right. Go ahead and take them over. Go ahead and vote on that. I say aye.
If you're planning a marriage, why don't you come in?
Yeah, I know.
I know, we're throwing him off.
Yeah. With that, we'll go ahead and we'll do a roll call.
I'm Deo Baker.
Brittany Thompson.
Nelson Abbott.
Tricia Thomas.
Paul Crook.
Hi Ellis Absen. Okay. Go ahead and we'll open it up in the public forum. Do they have anyone from the public that would like to share a few thoughts or words with us? It seems that we have no interest from the public.
Is that you? You sold up in one. So I'm not sure if this is the right forum or not, but I am trying to, I have a couple lots and trying to develop on Gladstand, on the golf course. They're actually in Payson. I've had several conversations with both cities. It looks like right now we're having to go for the well. I wanted to come one more time to you guys. I think the money would be better served if we put that into bringing in eight-inch line. Obviously that'd be tying in, but I believe there's a solution here that benefits Elkridge and helps me get my house built. That's all I'm trying to do. I really love the area. We feel drawn here, like we're supposed to be here. And so we just were hoping we could, you know, open up a discussion and see if there's a better way than drilling a well.
Can you say your name?
Jeremy Witt.
Jeremy Witt? Okay, nice to meet you. Who have you spoken with in the city so far about this issue?
I believe we talked to him at first and then we've talked to Payson. Payson's basically acknowledged that they're never bringing the utilities up. It's my understanding that there's someone that's already got a well and a septic approved by the clubhouse. That lot's actually for sale as a building lot right now. I don't know if you guys are aware of that. So that's kind of the route I think everyone's going to start going and I'm not sure that that's the best thing for you guys or for that.
Yeah, I think it's tricky with a well and septic systems.
Right. So, I mean, the money's pretty equal to bring in the improvements or do the well. So it's like, makes more sense to bring in the improvements. It's 700 feet away, so.
So what I would recommend, this is the first, I think we've heard of this issue.
Talk about it before.
Gladstand, we've talked, yeah.
I think others have tried this before.
Yeah, we have talked about it in the past. It may have been for your time. It may have been discussed by the planning commission a little bit. I do know, you know, we do have an air local with Payson City. We actually provide the water to the clubhouse.
I understand that and I believe it's two-inch line, right?
Yeah, yeah, they ran the two-inch line back in like 2007, 2000. Might have been the end of 2006. Prior to that, they were woefully, I mean, they have a water line there, but it didn't really provide any fire protection.
Correct.
You know, we do have an agreement with Payson with regards to where our boundaries will be and how things have worked out. And we, as the council, made a decision not to really go outside of those boundaries. So it would be more of a probably an air local type of an agreement that would need to be worked out, possibly.
This is the one that may have referred to a few meetings ago in regards to that this property is in Payson.
Right.
But Payson would like us to service it.
With water?
And they, you know, the property tax versus servicing and that's the one.
Okay. You know, I think we probably ought to at least maybe get Payson a call and kind of feel them out, see how they feel about it, if we work something.
And in that meeting that we had a few weeks ago with Payson, this was also brought up. And it's basically that they would love us to service it. They feel that we probably, where we send our sewer there, that should be something we strongly entertain. But there are some issues with the road and the fire.
And the snow removal.
Snow removal, you know, there's a lot of issues in this, the water itself, within the cost.
Well, I look at this and I can't help but think there's probably a way that Cooler Heads could prevail and come up with a solution that would work, that would be good for the property owner and good for both cities in a way that, it's not really about the property tax revenues, it's about doing what's right for both cities.
So my recommendation would be, if you had a proposal, submit your proposal to the mayor and we can look at that and then we can have a chance to, you know what I mean?
To review the proposal?
To review it and find out what our concerns are with roads and sewer and water and fire suppression and kind of what our risks are, right? To take that on versus the benefit and then we can have a discussion on that. But if you want us to review it, that would be my suggestion.
Okay, so submit something formally to the mayor and then get on the docket and.
Right. Yeah, so we can have some.
Where is your lot after you turn toward the clubhouse?
So right after you go up over the little hill on the left-hand side, right when it turns, the first two lots have turned to Payson. I actually have a little map of these lots.
Everyone going over to the clubhouse, you come up Elkridge Drive, take your right to turn over to the clubhouse, you go straight and then go up that hill and then it drops down and curves to the right?
I like, I have to see it.
He's got a map, right?
Yep, yep. It's my understanding, speaking with the property owners on these, they would also be interested in developing, some sort of developing if we were going to do it right.
I probably can't even vote on this.
Yeah, you.
You can, you just have to.
No, you just have to state the conflict.
Wouldn't I have to recuse myself on this?
No, Tricia, you just have to state your conflict.
You just take.
My dad owns the property before it, Hal Nicholson.
Oh, okay.
We're not spending on building there, so.
Okay, so you guys have the same problem then?
Yeah, there's, it's an issue to be working on.
No, no, this is Payson City.
So I actually, I actually work for a construction company that does the underground element, I think. So we would be willing to bring the eight-inch line in, fire hydrants, whatever you guys needed us to do there.
Yeah, I think honestly the biggest thing is, if we're going to provide a service, how do we?
Get your money.
Get our money to cover the services?
There's gotta be some sort of a hookup fee we can figure out or.
Yeah, it would seem to me the easiest thing though is probably not the easiest because of one of the.
So Payson says they have the right to this property?
It's in their city.
You remember that agreement we went over?
But that was a, no, but that was a shaded area because I remember looking specifically at that with my.
It doesn't make sense, it's an island and you have to come through Elkridge to get there.
But it wasn't, it was shaded, right? Like it could kind of go either way?
No, no.
How do they lay claim to that? They can't provide any services.
Because they also have the golf course, they annexed the golf course and that might be.
It's because of the golf course and that agreement, so.
Listen, I probably just can't even because I'm 110% with you because I'm only built there and I'm in Elkridge.
And as a council, we probably ought to start thinking about how we really feel about this because we've got a similar thing with Woodland Hills, so.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I would like to see a proposal.
We'll give you your map.
Because this is not the only issue we have this on and we need to decide how we're going to treat this all around. So we treat all landowners similarly.
I think we're probably, all think the same thing, we're just not going to say it in a public meeting, so.
Well, but we're not going to sell water to Payson.
I was going to say, I'll say it in a public meeting.
Well, you can go right ahead.
We need to be that really clear though, when we talked to them about Payson City before, the mayor said, we will not sell water to Payson City.
And I think the property owner should have the right to do whatever they want to with their property, whether they decide they want to be in city A or city B. And they ought to be able to annex into a city that can actually.
If our city's willing to annex, then it.
Is there always the annex out, Payson?
Well, it depends on who takes the high road.
Well, it's a process and it's up to the landowner to take that process and decide if they want to annex into a city or not, to go through that process.
So basically the process is to annex into a city, not annex out of.
Usually, but you can't actually come out of one city and go into another. We've done it here in Elkridge, pro bono, we've done it as they've ironed out their boundaries, they're on.
So if we can get every property owner on Gladstand signed on, you think that's a better possibility?
Yes, I think that's.
I would think that there's probably some strength in numbers.
And maybe higher in terms of.
I've talked to several, I think most of them are open to that.
Well, you may need to.
I think that's the reason that nothing's been built up there.
Well, I'm sure it is because I had a friend that used to own some of that property and that's why he sold it off years ago was because he couldn't, he couldn't do anything with it. He was hoping to build Elkridge and now he lives in Payson and that's a good story. So, okay, well, thank you for your time and your input there, giving us, it's always nice to hear from you as opposed to third party or on Facebook or something. So, okay. All right, so. You bet. Yes, we can, and I was just.
And Donna Jones was on the list. Did you want to speak?
Oh, I thought we were just supposed to sign in. I'm here with him.
So for the benefit, I know you told me the names of the two individuals. We've got, and I can't remember your name.
Wayne Quinteros.
And then we've got Sean Ram. Yes. The guy with the dogs.
What?
Well, that's all I can remember who he is. I'm sorry. I can put a name. So anyways, Mayor Ellis has interviewed both of them, Mr. Jones and Mr. Ram. No, 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 Tricia. He has interviewed both of them and is recommending that we appoint both of them to the planning commission so that they can have their meetings on a regular, consistent basis.
Oh, yeah, because you guys have an agent. Where do both of them live at? Where do you live at?
Elkridge, Chrisley Lane.
Oh, so you live down the.
Yeah, and the other one lives down off.
That is a, that is a positive to have someone from this.
Well, we have a couple dear partners.
And so is, and there's a couple down there. What's his name?
Everybody's down there.
Everybody, are they?
Yeah, part of the south.
That's what I was going to say. If we do this, everybody will be down there now on the planning commission.
Which, so.
No, they won because Stacy isn't.
We have one, we have one up there.
That's okay because I think it's the yin and the yang, the balances, what we're going with the council versus the planning commission.
We've already burned out everyone up here.
It's good, it's good to let it bounce, so, you know, his recommendation was to go ahead and appoint them both and I concur with him. I talked to him for probably about 15 minutes and I'm on the same page with him, so.
Jim and Jared, have you met with either of these individuals?
I'm Jim Chase.
Jim Chase is on our planning commission?
Yes.
And Jared is also on the planning commission?
He's Chase, my boy is still here.
All right. So that's where we're at, we just need a motion.
I will make a motion to approve Mr. Jones and Mr.
Ram.
Ram to the, as new planning commission members.
Hi, second. All in favor?
Aye.
And you've got a meeting Thursday night?
Yep. There's a little bit of light reading to associate with.
He's going to be out of town.
Actually, I'm going to be out of town, but I'll get caught up.
Because I suspect there will be one or two items. Probably.
We've got a good, good opportunity.
Probably one of them.
We'll be universe right now.
Okay.
Well, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Am I ever month of July? I am, but it's not coming on Thursday.
You don't have that.
That's why I took.
But Camia Johnson's putting out a slip and slide.
Relief society?
Okay, that, yeah, we'll take a picture. All right, so now we'll go ahead and we'll circle back to item number one and that's Gladston View Estates Development Agreement. We've got on here, we're going to call in to Shay, I guess. Why is he not here? Because one item and the cost bringing him out versus putting him on the phone, not even makes sense.
Okay, so on the development agreement, I didn't have any questions except for on terms, you guys just, you know, on terms one, it's got the word or in and it's.
Hi Shay, this is Royce. I'm going to put on speaker. Which one?
That makes a big difference in a contract right here. It says or and it should say of. It's just a technical error that we need to fix.
Wait a minute. Mine doesn't, mine says, oh, that's the next one, yeah, okay.
Shay, are you there?
Uh-huh, I am.
All right, this is Brittany, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. All right, we're ready to discuss the Gladston View Estates Development Agreement.
Great. So hopefully you received a copy of that, that in last week, you'll be able to read through it, but just as a reminder, back in, I think it was April 25th, at the city council meeting, on the preliminary plan for Gladston View Estates, the city council wanted to go with an eight-foot white trail behind a four-foot white park strip, which basically created a situation where on our typical 66-foot white right-of-way, we'd need an extra two feet behind the back of curb. And so that extra two feet was taken out of the lot, which meant that the lots that, the smaller lots, one through 12, which were set up at 15,000 square feet, which is the minimum square footage in the R1 15,000 zone, basically those lots would be reduced in square footage by a little bit. And so the city agreed to allow the developer to reduce the overall square footage of the lots by taking the two feet of footage up in front of them and then it also allowed the developer to reduce the setback, preferably in the rear, by two feet to allow the total area for the homes to be no different than on any other 15,000 square foot lot. And so those are the items that are addressed in this development agreement.
Yeah, so Shay, I just had two things to kind of comment on in terms of the agreement. The first is just grammatical error. Terms, paragraph one says the overall right-of-way width or 68 feet. I think that word or should be of.
Of, you're correct.
So we need to make that change. And then my second comment was, under the terms, I mean, this contract only addresses that issue with the additional two feet, but I think we need a paragraph in there stating that the development should be in accordance with the plat previously agreed to by the city council on the date, what was it, June? I think it was June 27th.
Okay.
Just because we've got a development agreement here that only addresses two simple issues of the whole development and so I don't want that to be taken out of context of, I think we just need a paragraph in there that states.
As per city council.
Well, that, no, that just says, you know, this is only to address these two small issues and the rest of the development will be according to the plans approved by the city council on June 25th, 2017, or whatever day we approved all the other plans.
Okay.
That would be my only recommendation.
Would that be enough, that'll be paragraph five through the terms?
Just because contracts often supersede the previous agreements and so I just don't want an issue coming up where they change something and say, well, it's not in the contract, so we can do X, Y, Z, right?
That's a great point.
Okay. Sorry, anyone else on the council that commented?
I think you addressed, you're spot on, everything else. So Shay, with that in mind, is this something where we can get an addendum to it and the council could be pulled and we could approve it after that's been done?
Sure, that's the way you want it, yeah.
I would be a lot more comfortable going that route than getting the car.
Put together really quick and get it out to you in the next couple of days.
Okay. So I'm thinking that's, rather than voting on it without that other piece in there, which would be the reason we want the piece in there, I think we ought to get it in there before we vote on it. So I guess the direction to you Shay would be to get that done and Royce, if you'd let me know when that's done so we can, I can call around and take a poll vote. Till he gets back. It didn't give me any exactly. It was going to be back. It just depends on, can you drive home?
I think he's out all week.
Yep, he'll be out the rest of the week, so.
Okay Shay, I think we don't have anything else regarding that.
Next one, just the water allocation.
Yeah, well, we, the water allocation can happen until we.
We can't do that until we do this.
Right.
Right?
Shay.
Shay?
Shay.
You still there?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, so the water right allocation, we can't do that until we do the other, correct?
So your approval of the original plat was based on approval of this development agreement, is you're correct?
Yep, okay.
So we can do that on the poll, I guess, also.
Yep, and then we'll ratify in our next council meeting.
Okay. Do I need anything further from Shay?
I don't think so. Yeah, no, that's, that's it.
Okay, have a good night Shay.
See ya.
This was, this was the reason to close that road down, man.
Stop it.
It widened up, they could put cones on. Kept traffic flowing, there was no reason to close it.
Why do you have so much done about this?
Because, just because things are done the same way and have been for years, there are better ways to do things and people don't want to do it.
Are we moving right into that?
We're going to move right into number four. That is, that is Paul's item on the agenda.
Well, it was part of the road closure, when they paved that spot down there on Goose Nest, there was no reason to close that road because it was wide enough, all they had to do was put up some cones, they could have kept traffic flowing through there without closing the road down. They do it for the convenience of the contractor and the people of Elkridge should come before the convenience of the contractor. I've talked with McKay about it and we were playing the what-if game, you know, well, how would you feel if one of those guys got hit? Well, they could get run over by their own equipment, get hit by lightning. An old person could not, could drive around the detour and run off the road and get killed. I mean.
It's just as likely to get hit by lightning as they get hit by thundering.
That's what I'm saying, but there was no reason to close that road. I've been, I've done construction, a lot busier streets and you don't close them off. Even digging across the street there, you dig halfway, put your pipe in, bury it, then go to the other side of the road. They don't want to.
Does that cost us more money if we do that, that way?
No, you write it in the contract and have them bid on it.
And I agree with Paul on this. I mean, the whole issue, we just allow the contractors to do whatever and it's cheaper and easier for them just to close the road and it's inconvenient to install the residents.
Yeah, it took me a whole like 45 extra seconds.
That's not the point.
No, it kind of is true.
No, it's not. When they cut across the roads, they don't have to close the road down, they can close one lane, put in what pipe or whatever they're putting in, bury it and then go and do the other side. It should be written in the city contract when they're bidding on these jobs and they should put in something, how they're going to keep the traffic flowing. I bet they don't do that. Do they do that, McKay? Is there some?
Are the bids going to come back higher if they have to do that?
Well, this wasn't a city job, this was a private development. It wasn't part of your job.
This is the city allowing the developers to do it.
But in those road closed signs they left out there, Saturday morning, the guy was pouring cement, he closed the road, he put those signs out and tried to close the road off. Did you know that Saturday?
I came down Saturday morning and saw it and pulled the signs. I don't, I didn't know. I thought it was kids that had.
It wasn't kids, it was that guy that was doing the concrete stuff up there, he just saw them and pulled them over. Nobody was obeying him because they, everybody saw that they were, that's what he had done.
When I went through, like nine o'clock, there was nobody on the road.
Yeah, they were, they were on the road when I went through about seven.
So we do that stuff all the time, we would never close the road. We would never let that happen.
I've worked enough that we don't close the roads.
That's what I'm saying, we would never close the road to do a job.
Unless it floods or there's a sinkhole or something, but I mean, just for paving that down there, they were completely out of the roadway. Where they were paving on there.
Whose job is it to tell them they can't do that though? McKay's?
Yeah.
Do you have time to please that too? Do we just want to?
Well, we know what we're going to do.
Or should we just have an honorary person like, I don't know, Paul?
No.
No.
We'll give him a little best.
It's got to be.
It's really an administrative type function.
McKay's deal.
I was going to give him the very best.
It's not like I went, you're the contractor, I just talked with McKay.
But McKay needs to know how the council feels, so if he could just tell every contractor in the city now, you are not allowed to close a road when.
Unless you can show, there are times though when it.
Right, right, but that's what I was going to say, and written permission or something, but just as a standard, it's not allowed. But McKay needs that direction, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I've got to know what we're going to do. But keep in mind here too, on Goose Nest, one whole lane, three-quarters of the lane is missing with two trenches running the full width of the road, two feet across, two feet wide across that whole road. The 32nd detour around and keep traffic moving is a lot better than the time it would have taken to drag trench plates. They don't need, like, getting the trench plates up here, everything like that, mobilizing, leave roads open when we can. That same road, Goose Nest, there was a water crossing, had them do half the trench, half the pipe work then, then come back, dig the other side and do half the pipe work, keep one lane open, keep traffic moving through there. It's not like I just go close roads, like Paul's making this out of sample.
Well, they, I've been up here, what, four years now, and there's, I've seen all kinds of road closures that doesn't have to be. I mean, even when they, they could have closed it down for the roundabout when they built out, but they put a detour in.
So you can drag trench plates and mess with those all day long and make a job take two hours. A job that would have taken two hours can now take four hours dragging and moving trench plates.
That's what needs to be written in the contract. You really don't need trench plates. You take half of it, bury your pipe, fix the road and then switch your lane over and build.
Some of those, but paving that whole, a whole three-quarters of the road down there, I mean, prepping and getting tests that we require. So your tester comes out once a day, compaction test comes out, you know, certain times of the day, can't say, oh, no, we can't tear out this section of asphalt until after 11 o'clock, come back. You can, you, there's an efficiency issue here too.
Down there where they did that, the old road was still there, you could have coned that off and gone into the bike lane and kept two lanes while they paved that new part where we're going to take the, you know, straighten the road out. They could have kept that open easy.
And then they would have torn that asphalt out and we would have come back and check and see if it met standards and compaction testing and with everything else.
There's a guy in the business that says they never close roads.
Okay, but neither side's different than Elkridge, okay? Significantly.
So let me, let me just, let me just ask some questions, because I think we have some different issues coming up here. So McKay, if we don't allow them to close the road, and they have to do half and then the other half, what does it cost the city in money or time to go out and make those different tests and checks?
So the city itself, essentially the only thing you're gonna have to do is, I mean, like, I have to come back out, and instead of inspecting the whole trench all in once, I'm gonna have to drop whatever I've got going on and come back out and test that. And I don't, I, we're running, we're running ragged as it is. Coming out is, I mean, if I can go out and inspect the whole trench all at once and be done with it for the day, that's great. Otherwise, we're shut down, I gotta get off the mower, come back up here, and it takes time and money from the city. That's the only cost.
Well, okay, so, I mean, what I'm trying to figure out is, right, so, I mean, the cost to the contractors is the cost of the contractors, and the city shouldn't be concerned about that. That's their cost, right? So as a city, we're looking at, okay, the cost to the residents, or the inconvenience to the residents of a detour from a road being shut down, versus what is the actual cost to the city if we don't allow the road to be shut down? Which is McKay's time, or one of our public works employees' time, to go out and make two checks instead of one?
Sure.
Which is what I'm understanding, right?
But also, but also the inconvenience of it taking twice as long, and now I have to drive through this little area for a week versus two or three days. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, that also needs to be taken...
Yeah, you're just having to drive there.
Really? I mean, there are real problems in the world, and this is like not even one of them.
Yes, it is.
Oh, it is, no, I need to respect that.
To me, it's...
It keeps...
It raises outside of your time.
I honestly think that there, there are gonna be times when it needs to be done. When they go and they...
Yeah, I say leave it to him, that he's in charge.
The roundabout later on, a couple of weeks.
When they do that overlay, it's gonna be closed down, because we can't, we're not gonna have people bahaing through the city property again. Now, I mean, it's, you're gonna have to just drive around till it's done, and it's just part of living in Utah where we can't work on roads year-round, we kind of get to work on them during our fifth season, which is road construction.
We trust him to do his job, and it's up to McKay. That's his, it's an administrative...
And that's, I think, I think that it's...
No, it's not your job, it is his.
I think that it falls...
No, he doesn't. Do you sign his paycheck?
No. It falls on the public works director, the mayor, and Royce, and Shay, when they go through the TRCs and they do these things, and they bring this forward to us, and we approve a development, at that point in time, once we've signed off on it, we're done. It's not our issue anymore.
I just want to say something, when things go out for bid, I mean, they do go out for bid, right? We just don't hire the same contractor all the time?
Well, we, we have...
This is, yeah, city, these are, this is...
Developers.
Well, he was mad about the landscaping, too, because he complained to me about that multiple times. Yes, you were, when they closed the road for the landscaping. I heard about that for weeks.
But the thing is, they should come when they, developers should have, you know, some paperwork, you know? See what they're gonna, what they're gonna do with the roads.
When we as a city, when we bid it out and we add anything extra, it could be an extra sheet of paper, it could be an extra cone, they're not giving it away to us for free. They're gonna charge us when we do projects, and if we're gonna have a flagger, or we're gonna take, or we're gonna have to do these other things, it costs us more, and our responsibility is to be as fiscally responsible as we can, as much as we can.
Doesn't that cost us more for the developers?
Well, it's not with the developer. Developer, that's a separate issue.
I was gonna say, that's why I think we're mixing issues of city projects versus developer projects.
Because the city hasn't had a project like that, because we...
But things still, still, you gotta say, we're gonna close this road for these days, you know, they just can't pick days at random, you know? Put them out on the website, you know, at least, you know?
Well, and that's, that's one of the things, because I...
But going around here is like, how much longer does it take you, honestly and truly?
What's gonna happen if there's a fire and you can't get out because the roads are closed?
If it's because they're landscaping, I'll knock the sign down myself right now.
The reality of it is, we're gonna have some closures that are...
What if someone gets hit by lightning?
When that happens, I think, you know, when I talked with the mayor about this, and I've talked with Royce, our consensus, our feeling on it is, if we're gonna actually close a significant road, like an artery-type thing down, where you close that roundabout area down, that's significant enough, we're gonna notify everybody instantly and say, FYI, on these days, this is what's gonna be the case, based on how long they anticipate that it's gonna take, so people are aware ahead of time. You know, I honestly have to hand it to McKay, I feel like the sign placements and things when roads have been closed down have been a lot better than they have been in the past.
Yeah, you know, as well as...
As opposed to driving to the end of a dead-end road and pressing the sign and having to turn around.
That's true.
They're putting them out far enough ahead so that I know to go around, and it's not a huge inconvenience, so...
You think about frustration with construction, wait for a couple of years when they rebuild Elbridge Drive from the highway, you know, and I, I'm pretty sure they'll close down some roads.
Yeah, when they did that, the first time with the bridge over the canal, was it six months?
Yeah.
And everybody either went on Goose Nest or...
Yeah, I think you gotta be practical. I personally have not been inconvenienced. I drive up through there all the time. I like, I like the fact they shut it down. You only have one lane. When they do the landscaping, I'm in favor of that. You've got, you've got it easy, you got to your old route back again that you can, you can move it.
Well, we can agree to disagree, but at the same time, going back to Mayor Shelley, when he encouraged all of us on the council at the time, he said, "You know what, when you come home, or you leave town, don't drive the same way every time. There's more to the city than just the roads you drive on, and when you drive these other roads, you see things that are going on, you're more aware of what's going on in the city, and people can see you." And I think that that's a...
Have you tried to make a left turn down there lately? It's easier just to go at Goose Nest.
I know, pretty sure.
Oh, it is? No, down, the highway. You know, and that one, that's kind of out of our hands. We're waiting on you lot to do their thing, so...
Right entrance in the center.
I believe that's everything we've got on the agenda, so with that in mind...
Wait, do we have to make a motion to question him?
Actually, I was just, just gonna note a couple of, a couple of things. Met with McKay and Dean Ingram, a couple of his guys, and Brad Olson, you know, to review, you know, the landscaping on the, on the entrance down there. Like, actually, McKay had the, you know, we were talking about, you know, trying to do rock and run the trees, you know, over by the property line. What we ended up, and then having to run that concrete border all the way through there, that would be about $8,000. You know, and Dean was saying, you know, "There's some things that, you know, who's paying for this, you know? What's the city gonna put in, into this?" But McKay's idea is what we ended up with, and I like, like the idea. On that, on the trail going up, we needed, you know, I had made the point, we need something on the west side, both to balance it out and to have a shade area. We have, down in the other part, you know, they had built in the concrete semicircles there, that the benches are on and that, things. We're going to do several of those up the, up the west side of the trail, just have it with the curving that will be good for mowing, and then they'll have a tree and a couple of shrubs. Later on, we'll get some scouts to do projects and put in, put in the benches. We will need to bring the, you know, it was my opinion, and I think that that, and I think we kind of agreed, that that sign would be a lot more visible out, out by where, where the third arrow is, rather than back in front of the, just trying to block the power box with it. You know, that puts it way back in, so we'll put those in there. The landscaping that they, that we discussed there, trees around, the lawn that's going around, that will be a very attractive, I'm very, very happy with the final, the final phase of that, it has worked out well. Appreciate it, McKay. McKay has done a dynamite job as public works. I had a boy for you, McKay, you've done...
So for the stop, stop.
McKay, just tell me.
Have any of you guys talked to the county commissioners regarding the bookmobile? Did you guys see that email come in?
What's your...
When?
I had a couple of emails that were, I thought, "Hope you've won $30 million."
No, they sent it, and you believe that?
I've got billions coming from my...
I know, I just deleted them.
No, I haven't seen anything.
That was on my...
Are they, are they discontinuing it?
Well, yeah, so they should, they sent it, we got it forwarded to us, I don't know what day it was, or just earlier this week, or maybe end of last week. So, so the, just so you guys know, the issue is the, the county commissioners are considering whether to continue service to incorporated areas who don't pay towards the contracted price of the bookmobile, which includes our city. They've been asked to cut, cut all those cities off and no longer include them. The commissioners, the Utah County commissioners, want to hear from anybody who's stopped that would affect, which includes our Elbridge stop. So I talked with Britton Lund over the bookmobile to find out, how many users do we have in Elbridge, how many books, like, right? How much do we actually use this service? And he said there's 68 households that have, currently have cardholders with the bookmobile, and he said for the last year, we checked out 1,857 checkouts.
Okay. So I think, I think we need to be prepared to possibly end up paying for the service.
Well, they, they haven't decided yet.
They haven't decided yet, but I think you need to be prepared for that.
Yeah, they're meeting on the 18th, and they want to hear from the cities to see how we feel about them.
Will you email me that? I don't, I'm looking at it.
If you wouldn't mind forwarding that, then we can take the time.
Yeah, and I, okay, I thought it was to all of us. Somehow I got this email. Anyways, I've been talking back and forth with Britton about, like, this issue, and getting kind of numbers and stuff from him, but that's a lot, like, you know, 2,000...
Well, it's a lot more than the last time when we discontinued before, because when we discontinued it back in, it was like 2007, I think, when we discontinued it, we had one family in the entire town that was using it, and it was costing the city thousands. I mean, it was like, we could have bought them every book they ever wanted to read, and it would have been less.
Yeah, so there's 68...
I mean, clearly, we've got a lot of people, Royce.
We kept one of the library cards in Spanish.
And that's why we discontinued it, and then they came back to us a few years ago and said, "We'll provide this service to you at no cost." So then it's like, why wouldn't we?
Yeah, we went to them, to see how much it would cost to get on the bookmobile again, because we had a huge interest in the library, and they said, "Oh, actually, under these new rules, you guys qualify for free because of your, how small of a town you're..."
What we need to do, what we need to do, when we reach out to the county commissioners, we need to remind them that we're all paying for the RTA, we're not gonna ride the bus.
Can you write me what my email address is, say, I just want that?
Yeah, so it's, is Commissioner Lee that kind of reached out and wants to hear how we feel about this move?
Yeah, Nathan Ivey probably has my answer, he just got back from Kansas, he's been gone for a couple of weeks.
Anyway, so if you guys will reach out to the commissioners, I will forward this information, and I've got a phone call with Britton tomorrow morning as well, to like, discuss more of this. I just want to let you guys know that's going on, and their meeting is next week.
Yeah, it's the 18th.
It's the 18th. So they wanted to hear from us kind of the first of this week, so they could...
We need, we need to respond, and we need to respond to Commissioner Ivey, Commissioner Lee, and Commissioner Graves, all three, especially Commissioner Graves.
Does it have all three of the email addresses in the thing?
No, it doesn't.
Will you forward?
I, I can...
I don't have that stuff, guys, really.
Google?
Google?
Come on, Trish.
Anyway, but I was gonna say, the other thing, too, just, because I, I frequent the bookmobile, and I've talked to them on a number of occasions since they've been coming back, kind of about our attendance and how, but they say our attendance is like, one of the highest attendances in the, yeah, and they were, wanted to expand how long they're here, because it's so busy.